Good evening and welcome. Before tonight's board meeting, Jordan Elsie, a junior to be at Destrahan High School, will lead us in a moment of reflection. Jordan has been enrolled in all honors and advanced placement courses at Destrahan since her freshman year and is an honor roll recipient. Jordan has been a Destrahan cheerleader both the years of high school and was selected outstanding sophomore cheerleader. She has been selected to serve as president of the Destrahan High School Fellowship of Christian Students for the 2022-2023 school year and is an active member and volunteer for St. Charles United Methodist Church. After the moment of reflection, board member Mr. John Smith will lead the pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you today to pray that this meeting will be the start of a successful school year. I hope that everyone is having a restful summer and will continue to rest before the school year begins. Though this past year was stressful and not quite ideal, we persevered and I pray that the 2022-2023 school year will be less stressful to all students and staff and give us new opportunities for growth. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, Jordan, for that moment of reflection, and we wish you the best in your remaining two years of high school. We hope the next two years are somewhat normal for you. So, again, thank you for coming. This meeting of the Board for St. Charles Parish Public Schools is called A Order for Wednesday, June 15, 2022. For the record, we have seven board members in attendance. Mr. Ellis Alexander, the District One Board Member, is absent this evening. Also in attendance with us this evening is Superintendent Dr. Ken Ordley and Mrs. Shelley Babino, who is the Executive Secretary for the Board and the Superintendent. We're going to begin with a couple of resolutions. The first item is Item 2.01, which is a resolution in memory of Kelly Grau, and I ask Mrs. Melinda Menore to present that resolution for us.
Mr. President, it would be an honor and appropriate to read this resolution. Resolution in memory of Ms. Kelly Grau. Whereas Ms. Kelly Grau served as an educator for a total of eighteen years in the St. Charles Parish Public School System, and be it resolved that the St. Charles Parish School Board herein expresses to the family of the late Ms. Kelly Grau with sincere sympathy in this their time of sorrow, and be it further resolved that a page in the June 15, 2022 Board Meeting Minute Book be set aside for the sole purpose of inscribing thereon this resolution and that a copy of this resolution be presented to its president. Motion to approve the memorial.
We have a motion by Mrs. Menore, seconded by Mr. Robisho. Any discussion? Please, please cash your vote. That motion passes, and at this time, Mrs. Menore and Dr. Ordley will present the resolution to the family. The next item is Item 2.02, which is a resolution in memory of Darrell Honor, and I ask Mr. Art O'Quinn to present that resolution.
I'd be honored, Mr. President. Resolution in memory of Mr. Darrell Honor. Whereas Mr. Darrell Honor served for a total of thirty-nine and a half years as a custodian of St. Charles Parish Public School System, and be it resolved that the St. Charles Parish School Board herein expresses to the family of the late Mr. Darrell Honor its sincere sympathy in this their time of sorrow, and be it further resolved that a page in the June 15, 2022 Board Meeting Minute Book be set aside for the sole purpose of inscribing thereon this resolution and that a copy of this resolution be presented to Mr. Honor's family, and I move adoption.
We have a motion by Mr. O'Quinn, seconded by Mr. Nakhan. Any discussion? Please cash your vote. That motion passes, and I ask Mr. O'Quinn to, along with the Superintendent, to present the resolution to the Honor family. Moving into recognitions, I'd like to yield a floor to the Superintendent, who I understand has a spec- special recognition with a guest in the audience.
Thank you, Mr. President. On May 1, 1923, the St. Charles Parish School Board purchased a lot less than four thousand feet from Bayou Des Almonds to construct an elementary school building upon the surface of three communities: Des Almonds, Parity, and Bayou Gosh. Over the years, the building was relocated to different locations before the school building returned to the original Des Almonds site. The American Legion Post 316 purchased the building in 1959 and relocated it to the American Legion Ballpark. In 1999, the parish purchased the building. A nonprofit board, the Des Almonds Bayou Gosh Parity Museum Society, formed in 2013 to focus efforts on renovating the original Des Almonds Elementary School as a museum. However, the damages sustained from Hurricane Ida in August of 2021 were too great to overcome. The history of this building will live on through efforts of a museum society led by local author and historian Mr. Roy Lunk, who was with us tonight with his family, as well as through the replica constructed by Mr. Wilbert Nakhan, who is also with us tonight with his family. We welcome both gentlemen who are in attendance tonight. The replica and other artifacts are on display here this evening, right outside the boardroom, and will be at various locations throughout the parish over the next year. We encourage our community to take part in our district's educational history that will be on display throughout St. Charles Parish. At this time, I'd like to invite Mr. Wilbert Nakhan and Mr. Roy Lunk forward to take a picture with the Board President and myself.
Item 3.01 is Board and Superintendent recognition. On behalf of the, before we do the recognitions, I just want to say on behalf of the Board, congratulations to the student and employee who will be recognized this evening. The, you not only bring recognition to you and your family, but also to the district, and that makes us proud. At the conclusion of the recognitions, we're going to take a short recess. Thank you.
We'll begin with students. Hanville High School student was named to the Class 5A All-State Softball Team, Avery Edgar. School system students were named to an LHSAA All-Academic Composite Team. From Destrahan High School, named to the soccer team is Kayden Leday. And from Hanville High School for Golf, we have Brody Conssan. School system students were named to the All-District Tennis First Team. From Destrahan High School, Alex Lay, who was also named the Girls Singles Most Valuable Player. Britt Lay. Joshua Walther. From Hanville High School, Shay Berset and Caitlin Boudreaux, who were also named the Girls Doubles Most Valuable Players. School system students were named to the Bayou River All-League Tennis First Team. From Destrahan High School, Alex Lay. And from Hanville High School, Shay Berset and Caitlin Boudreaux. Employees. Luling Elementary School employee was selected as the 2022 Louisiana Public Interest Fellow, Brian Goff.
We'll take a short recess at this time. You certainly welcome to stay for the board meeting, but this gives you an opportunity to leave if you'd like to do so. Okay, we're back in session to conduct the business portion of the meeting. Item 4.01, minutes of the May 4, 2022 Committee Meetings, May 11, 2022 Regular Board Meeting, and June 6, 2022 Board Retreat.
Move approval?
I'll second.
We have a motion by Mr. Robisho, seconded by Mr. Smith. Any discussion? Please cash your vote. That motion passes. Item 4.02, reappointment of members of the Dr. Rodney R. Lefond Performing Arts Center Endowment Fund Board. The Board approved a resolution for shell sponsorship of the Dr. Rodney R. Lefond Performing Arts Center Endowment Fund at the November 14, 2018 Board Meeting. As the overseeing custodian of the endowment fund, the St. Charles Parish School Board must approve the reappointment of the board members for the endowment fund. The terms of reappointment are Stephanie Gullidge and Rosemary Sanders for a period of July 1, 2022 through June 30, 2023.
I move that we approve the reappointment of Stephanie Gullidge and Rosemary Sanders to the Dr. Rodney R. Lefond Performing Arts Center Endowment Fund Board.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. O'Quinn, seconded by Mr. Robisho. Any discussion? Please cash your vote. That motion passes. Item 4.03, appointment of a member of the Dr. Rodney R. Lefond Performing Arts Center Endowment Fund Board. The Board approved a resolution for shell sponsorship of the Dr. Rodney R. Lefond Performing Arts Center Endowment Fund at the November 14, 2018 Board Meeting. As the overseeing custodian of the endowment fund, the St. Charles Parish School Board must approve the appointment of the board members for the endowment fund. The term of appointment is Felicia Gomez-Walker for a period of July 1, 2022 through June 30, 2025.
I move the, I move to approve the appointment of Felicia Gomez-Walker to the Dr. Rodney R. Lefond Performing Arts Center Endowment Fund Board.
We have a motion by Mr. O'Quinn, seconded by Mr. Smith. Any discussion? Please cash your vote. That motion passes. Item 4.04, bid authorization request, Hanville Learning Center Demolition Project. The Hanville Learning Center property sustained significant damage due to Hurricane Ida. The cost to repair the property exceeds the amount of insurance proceeds that will be reimbursed to the district. The construction documents for the Hanville Learning Center demolition project have been completed by the architect and are ready for bid. The district anticipates funding this project through insurance proceeds and/or federal grant funding. This agenda item was reviewed at the Capital Improvements Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, June 13, 2022, and is aligned with Goal D of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the bid authorization request for the Hanville Learning Center demolition project.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Nakhan, seconded by Mr. Savoy. Any discussion? Please cash your vote. And that motion passes. Item 4.05, proposal acceptance emergency construction of building components and/or grounds. The district's hurricane disaster preparedness and recovery plan includes a recommendation by FEMA to refine the manner in which emergency work is provided after a district declared emergency. Proposals for emergency construction of building components and/or grounds enable the district to expedite the recovery of funds following the emergency. Four proposals for emergency construction of building components and/or grounds were received on Tuesday, June 7, 2022. This agenda item was reviewed at the Capital Improvements Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, June 13, 2022, and is aligned with Goal D of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we accept a proposal from International Property Development, LLC during business to Signature Group LLC for emergency construction of building components and/or grounds.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Nakhan, seconded by Mrs. Menore. Any discussion?
Mr. President, I'd like to give a shout out to, they didn't bid this time, but the importance of having an emergency contractor during a tremendous event like we had. I'd like to give a shout out to Pintail Contracting Services and Creative Improvements. I'd like to give them credit for as hard as they worked and their boots on the ground after this, after Ida this year.
Thank you, Mr. Robisho. Any further discussion? Please cash your vote. That motion passes. Item 4.06, personnel items. Staffing management is necessary to maintain effective functioning of St. Charles Parish Public Schools. The Human Resources Department provides a staffing update monthly to the Board. This agenda item was reviewed at the Personnel and Policy Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, June 13, 2022, and is aligned with Goal B of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we approve your agenda item for personnel items. They're presented to the Board.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Mr. Savoy, seconded by Mr. O'Quinn. Any discussion?
Mr. President, we do have three selected administrators in our audience tonight, newly selected administrators in our audience. Miss Carrie Gilmanow, Assistant Principal at JB Martin Middle School, please stand and be recognized. Mr. Brian Goff, Assistant Principal at Luling Elementary School. And Mr. Brad Landash, Administrative Monitor at Landry Alternative Education Program Center. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Dr. Ordley. Any further discussion? Please cash your vote. That motion passes. Item 4.07, Head Start Job Description Revisions. The Superintendent is responsible for recommending job description revisions to the Board. Several revisions to Head Start job descriptions are being recommended for the 2022-2023 school year. This agenda item was reviewed at the Personnel and Policy Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, June 13, 2022, and is aligned with Goal B of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we approve your Head Start Job Description Revision. They're presented to the Board.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Mr. Savoy, seconded by Mr. O'Quinn. Any discussion? Please cash your vote. That motion passes. Item 4.08, Revisions to Policy 4.23, Evaluation of Staff Members, First Reading. Based on feedback from Forthought Consulting, Incorporated, and a review of Policy and Procedure 4.23, Evaluation of Staff Members, it was determined that significant revisions were required. This agenda item was reviewed at the Personnel and Policy Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, June 13, 2022, and is aligned with Goal B of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we accept the revisions to Policy 4.23, Evaluation of Staff Members, for our first reading.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. O'Quinn, seconded by Mrs. Menore. Any discussion? Please cash your vote. And that motion passes. The next item is Item 4.09, Technology Installation Center Facility Coordinated Position. Over the past several years, St. Charles Parish Public Schools has experienced a significant increase in the number of technological devices needed for administrative functions, teaching, and learning. The district continues to focus on mobile technologies and has moved to a one-to-one device take-home program for students. These devices require preventive maintenance, service, and replacement according to the Technology Obsolescence Plan. In order to continue to meet the needs of the district, a Technology Installation Center Facility Coordinated Position is needed. This agenda item was reviewed at the Personnel and Policy Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, June 13, 2022, and is aligned with Goals B and C of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Move approval.
Second.
Figured that one out, Al.
We have a motion by Mr. Robisho, seconded by Mr. Smith. Any discussion? Please cash your vote. Please cash your vote. Okay, that motion passes. Item 4.10, Phase 1 District Staffing Plan. Due to continued staffing challenges, administration has developed a phased-in plan to transition contracted temporary positions to district positions. Phase 1 includes transitioning 61 positions, including all 55 paraeducators and all six clerical positions. This agenda item was reviewed at the Personnel and Policy Committee meeting of the Board on Monday, June 13th, 2022 and is aligned with Goal B of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the one district staffing plan for a total cost of $1,606,000, $37, and I second.
We have a motion by Mr. Savoye, seconded by Mr. O'Quinn, any discussion? Please cash your vote. And that motion passes. Item 4.11, pay rate increase for AM/PM positions effective fiscal year 2022-2023. In order to retain and attract the most highly qualified AM/PM positions and remain competitive, the district has identified a need to increase compensation. The district's proposed pay rate increase is effective for fiscal year 2022-2023. This agenda item was reviewed at the Finance and Audit Committee meeting of the Board on Monday, June 13th, 2022 and is aligned with Goals B and C of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the pay rate increase for AM/PM positions effective for fiscal year 2022-2023 as presented to the Board on Monday.
Second.
Let me just add that the cost of that is going to be $319,246 annually.
Thank you, Mr. Nakyan, Mr. Savoye. Motion by Mr. Nakyan, seconded by Mr. Savoye, any discussion? Please cash your vote. That motion passes. Item 4.12, official journal for fiscal year 2022-2023. Louisiana Revised Statute, Section 43, Paragraph 141, requires that each school board select an official journal for a term not to exceed one year. The newspaper shall have been published in an office physically located in St. Charles Parish for a period of five years preceding the selection, shall not have missed during that period as many as three consecutive issues unless caused by fire, flood, strike, or natural disaster, shall have maintained a general paid circulation in St. Charles Parish for five consecutive years prior to selection, and shall have been entered in a U.S. post office in St. Charles Parish under a second-class mailing permit in that parish for a period of five consecutive years prior to the selection. At this time, only the St. Charles Herald Guide qualifies as the school board's official journal. This agenda item was reviewed at the Finance and Audit Committee meeting of the Board on Monday, June 13th, 2022 and is aligned with Goal E of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we accept the St. Charles Herald Guide as the school board's official journal for 2022-2023 school year.
Mr. President, I would second that motion and to add the approximate cost is about $15,000 per year.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nakyan.
Motion by Mr. Savoye, seconded by Mr. Nakyan, any discussion? Please cash your vote. That motion passes. Item 4.14, accounts payable for the month of May 2022. Envoyesses and other financial obligations of the school district are customarily paid weekly. Requests for approval of these transactions is normally made to the Board monthly. The Board must approve expenditures under public, of public funds under its jurisdiction. This agenda item was reviewed at the Finance and Audit Committee meeting of the Board on Monday, June 13th, 2022 and is aligned with Goal C of the Board's Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the accounts payable for the month of May 2022 at a cost of $8,612,575.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Nakyan, seconded by Mr. Savoye, any discussion? Please cash your vote. That motion passes. Item 4.15, superintendent's evaluation and contract review. The Board has conducted the superintendent's evaluation for the 2021-2022 school year. The performance of the superintendent has been exemplary while leading the school system through Hurricane Ida recovery and meeting identified performance benchmarks as discussed in executive session of the special board meeting on June 6th, 2022. The Board will consider Amendment 3 to the superintendent's contract as provided.
Mr. President, I move approval.
We have a motion by Mr. Nakyan, seconded by Mr. Savoye, any discussion? Please cash your vote. That motion passes. Moving into our closing items, item 5.01, standing committee reports. The chairman of any standing committee may present a report at this time.
Mr. President, Capital Improvements Committee met on Monday, Monday, the 13th. We had a proposal, a discussion, I'm sorry, with Mr. John Rome, Mr. Kate Rogers, on our safety and security at our facilities. Those are constantly under review. We fine tune those on a regular basis. We made some recommendations for safety and security to follow through on and report back to the Board. Other items that we discussed were bid authorization request for Hanville Learning Center demolition project and proposal acceptance for emergency construction of building components and/or grounds. Both those items were presented before table and approved tonight. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Nakyan.
Mr. Saffron, the Risk Management and Insurance Committee met, and we had a brief update from our attorney on some legal issues, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. O'Quinn.
Mr. President, the Policy and Personnel Committee meeting met on Monday, June 13th. Item 4.06, personnel items reviewed. 4.07, head start job description revisions. 4.08, revisions to policy 4.23. 4.09, technology installation center coordinated position. Next item is 410, which is Phase 1 District Staffing Plan. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Savoye.
Mr. President, the Legislative Committee met last Monday night. This was an extremely busy, active legislative session, Louisiana State Legislature, an active, a number of pieces of legislation that directly impact everything that's called state. We have looked at those pieces of legislation and have determined how it's going to impact what we need to do in order to give compliance to those pieces of legislation. Additionally, the Board is considering the possibility of perhaps hiring a consultant who could perhaps serve in the obvious capacity for the Board to advise him. Because as we are providing those members and the intensity of legislation that is being approved by state lawmakers have a tremendous impact on the decision and the workload that's associated with reviewing every piece of legislation that impacts the ability to amend and challenge our staff. Without having the expertise and the contact and so forth, it's becoming absolutely necessary to look at getting some help in that area of the word examination, that possibility of at different times, as well as the possibility of thinking that developing a consortium of other school districts in our region that might be, might be the drive in that effort to get some of that obvious.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. The Finance and Audit Committee also met on Monday, June 13th, and the committee discussed five items. Three of those items came to the full Board during this meeting and were approved. Those three items were the pay rate increase for AM/PM positions effective fiscal year 2022-2023, official journal for fiscal year 2022-2023, and accounts payable for the month of May 2022. Two other items that were, that were discussed, that were for committee discussion only, were the, we had a discussion of statement of cash and investment management guidelines. That was our chief financial officer, Mr. Ronald White, presented information regarding the statement of cash and investment management guidelines and investment plans for the district. And the other item that we, that was for committee discussion only was we had some preliminary discussion relative to our interim fiscal year 2023 budget. That item will be on the, on the agenda for the July board meeting. And that brings us to item 5.02, which is our superintendent's report, and I'll yield to Dr. Wurley.
Thank you, Mr. President. A hurricane season extends now through November. The state and parish emergency operations centers have distributed information about hurricane preparedness and response. Over the years, St. Charles Parish Public Schools has worked very closely with our parish emergency operations center to make sure that this school system has a comprehensive plan for preparing and responding to hurricane events, as was evident last year. Please be prepared throughout this season and make a plan in case one threatens our area. The Business Office once again received the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting from Government Finance Officers Association and the Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting from the Association of School Business Officials International for the 2021-2022 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. These certificates represent the highest form of recognition in governmental accounting and financial reporting. Congratulations to CFO, Mr. Ronald White, and members of his department and this board for this recognition. St. Charles Parish Public Schools is hosting several summer learning opportunities for our students. Our high school summer program provides opportunities for high school students to earn initial, Carnegie credits, or to recover previously attempted coursework. The high school summer program, which began on Tuesday, June 7th, and lasts until Friday, July 8th. The Boost Summer Program for students in grades pre-kindergarten through eighth grade will provide eligible students 12 days of quality learning experiences in ELA math and enrichment. The Boost Program also incorporates a fun activity each day. These fun activities include activities like a live band, cartoonists, and dance parties. Our riders, our Young Riders Camp for students exiting grades 3 through 8 is being held at HHS from June 13th through the 16th. Our Engineering Camp for students exiting 4th and 5th grade will be held June 20th through the 24th at Hanville High School. And while students are enjoying their summer or participating in these learning opportunities, our teachers and administrators are busy preparing for the new school year. Hundreds of teachers are attending professional development sessions on topics such as the science of reading, English, science, and social studies, just to name a few. When you see teachers or administrators this summer, please thank them for their focus on continuous improvement of teaching and learning. That concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Dr. Wurley. Before we adjourn, just a reminder that our next board meeting is July the 20th, and the board meeting will be preceded by a public hearing on our fiscal year 2023 budget.
Just for the benefit of the public, I'd just like to make the announcement that, given the increased school violence and other kind of security concerns across the nation, just wanted to point out that the school board, superintendent, and staff are reviewing our security plans for next year and looking at what we're doing in a very serious way to make sure that our students are safe. And as we proceed through the next months or so, our students are not in school, we will be reviewing those efforts and we'll be coming out with an announcement very shortly of specifically what changes are going to be made in our security plan, making sure that our students are safe and secure during the school year.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Move adjourn?
A motion by Mr. Robichaud, seconded by Mr. Nakyan, to adjourn, all in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, nay. Stand adjourned.